Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley City Council. Today is February 18, 2020, in its approximately 5:40 PM. The first presentation is a recognition of the Canyon Springs High School Cyber Patriot Teams. Mayor Gutierrez will speak and present certificates of recognition to the Canyon Springs High School Cyber Patriot Teams.
All right, well, thank you so much, Mayor Protembaka. So, good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing tonight? Great, awesome, okay, that's great to hear. So, tonight, we are able to recognize a school and students for such a great achievement that they've actually been able to do. But at this time, I'd like to also recognize some other VIPs that are here tonight as well. Can we have President of the School Board, Marshall Locke, please stand? Give her a round of applause, she's here as well. Also, we have Board Member Jesus Holguin as well. We have Board Member CJ Johnson as well. And we have Board Member Susan Smith here as well. And we have the Superintendent of Moreno Valley Unified School District, Dr. Kedzioro, in the back right there. So, the, and if I could have them come up, if you like, if you'd like to come up as well? So, the Moreno Valley Cyber Patriot National Youth Cyber Education Program gives students the chance to learn about the careers in cybersecurity, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Just to show how much Moreno Valley Canyon Springs did so well, they actually made it to the semifinals. So, let's give a round of applause for that. It's awesome. These young competitors worked for six hours during each round of the competition to earn points to advance to state and on to the national semifinals. Out of almost 2,000 teams representing California, we had two teams place first in state and two more teams made the top 10 in state as well. That's amazing. Tonight, we do more than just honor their great achievement of being semifinalists. We honor their drive to succeed and their ability to work together as a team to accomplish their goals. So, it is my pleasure as the Mayor of the City of Moreno Valley, along with the council and the staff, and also your board members from the school district as well, to recognize the following Cyber Patriot performers for their amazing achievements. So, I'm going to call your name, and if you could come up, and then we'll shake hands, and then you'll receive a certificate as well. And if you could also remain standing here as well, and then we'll have three, probably two rows of students up here, okay? So, the first student that we have is Justin Burrell. Cody Derudier. Julian Gonzalez. Salvador Melendrez. Jacob Segura. Dominic Terasas, he's actually the captain. And first in state for the Golden All Service Division Air Force is Tyler Jones. Michael Lopez. Christopher Soriano. And Sergio Venegas, who's also the captain. And then for sixth in state, so sixth in state, Golden Open Division, this is called the Golden Open Division. We have Xavier Calalulot here, Calalot here? Demetrius Delacorte? No, okay. Andrew Farah? Crystal Garcia? Jadelyn Hernandez. And she's actually the captain for that group. Is Diego Moreno here? No, okay. Now, we're moving on to the next area, which is eighth in state, and this is the Golden Open Division, the eighth in state. Is Moises Veleche here? No, okay. Brian Galvan, captain? He's the captain of this group. We also have Manuel Garcia. Aiden Nava, is Aiden Nava here? All right. And just to be safe, Kevin Uskanga is not here? No, okay. All right, we also would like to recognize, by the way, two important leaders that have helped the Cyber Patriot Teams at Canyon Springs High School. We have Coach Dr. Kenneth Jones and Coach Mrs. Donna Woods, if they could come up as well. So, at this time, let's give them another hard round of applause for all their hard work as well. And at this time, I'd like to ask either the Board of Education, or maybe Donna Woods, or Dr. Kenneth Jones, if you would like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members and our audience. We are thrilled and absolutely so proud of our students and the teams you see here before you today. This year was a rebuilding year for us because we had over 28 seniors graduate out last year. So, the students that you see before you, many of them are first-year team members. And for all of our teams, all six teams that competed this year, we broke all of our school records. Our lowest-scoring team this year scored higher than our highest team two years ago. We are extremely proud of them. The national competition had over 7,000 teams competing this year and almost 2,000 teams in California. We are so proud of all of our students that participated throughout the year. They worked extremely hard, practicing several hours throughout the week and at home. And each round of competition is six years of academic challenges where we compete up at Moreno Valley College and at our school site. So, we are extremely appreciative of all the parents here, their support throughout the entire season, our board member support, and of course, our administration at our school sites. This year, we also extended, not only from Canyon Springs High School, but we added six middle-school competition teams. So, we are thriving and growing. And for all the parents that want to be a part of this and see their students in it in the future, we offer free Cyber Patriot camps in the summer. We had over 280 students participate last year, so we are going to have six camps offered this year, including an all-girl cyber camp. So, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
I also like to recognize Deja Brown as well, if she can come up as... Do we have Israel Perez? All right, so again, we just are so thrilled, our city, our school district, everyone's so thrilled because it really helps put us on the map, you know, throughout the state, and they have just done such an amazing job. So, again, congratulations to all of them, for all their hard work.
Thank you so much for coming and supporting our students. Let's give the Canyon Springs High School Cyber Patriot Teams another round of applause. The final presentation is recognition of the California Rush Moreno Valley Soccer Team. Mayor Gutierrez will speak and present the certificates.
All right, so I'm so excited to present these certificates to these young kids from the group called California Rush. Not only because I love soccer, by the way, and I used to play soccer, but because they do such an amazing job. Every year since the group has come about, California Rush, and I believe this is the second year, second or third year that they've already been here, they've been just winning, winning a lot of trophies, winning a lot of games, and so they have just been amazing. And it's so important to recognize our youth that are here in our city. So, it is my pleasure to recognize a group of exceptional Moreno Valley athletes, the California Rush Moreno Valley Soccer Team. This team practiced hard and ended the season undefeated with 12 wins. They are also moving up to an even more competitive division. These young residents of Moreno Valley make us all proud with their hard work and dedication. So, at this time, I'd like to have the coaches here with me. So, if I could have Coach Alonso Gomez here with me? Also, Club President Gabriel Lucatero, is he here, by the way? No, no, okay, okay. Assistant Coach Barack Hernandez, is he here? And then Team Manager Sahara Gomez as well. So, team members, I will call, hey, nice, I will call, I will call your name, and then we'll shake hands, and then we'll also provide you with a mayoral certificate as well, all right? And then at the end, if you, we'll take a picture, and if you could shake hands with the rest of the council too. So, we have Adrian Perez. Give him a round of applause. Alex Benjamin Guien. Anthony Alcantar. Daniel Morales. Derek Hernandez. Hi, Jamian Morales, Jamian Morales. Jesus Mesa. Joshua Maldonado. Josiah Palacios. And this is the 2006 team, or 2005?
2006.
2006 year. All right, Omar Sosa. Josiah Palacios. Roberto Sanchez. Yair Gutierrez. Hey, Gutierrez. All right, and Nathan Gama. Emmanuel Magdaleno. All right, and then at this time, I'd like to ask if either a representative from Club Rush would like to say a few words?
I get nervous every, I'm here last year, but I get nervous every time. Well, I kind of wrote something this time, so, first thing first, I would like to thank the Mayor, Acting Gutierrez, and all his council, everyone, because it means a lot to have the support from the city, especially these guys going to be young men. And we want to give them as much support as we can, so, you know, I mean, they can feel good about their city. And of course, their parents too, they have, is a big key to having them here. So, I just want to say thank you to them, thank you to you guys, and I really, really, it's an honor to be here for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Anyone from the top want to come down? Actually, we have you guys step down, and then everyone else who's left on the top step down. All right, and you three, if I can, in the back, if I can, you go this way, so we can see your faces. You two, a little bit more. And you four, a little step that way. There we go. Little guy wants to stand up too. There we go, all right. We'll get big smiles from everyone, we'll do a couple.
What a great evening with all these kids here, right? So, let's give the California Rush Moreno Valley Soccer Team another round of applause. And congratulations to everybody. That concludes the special presentations for this evening. The city council meeting will reconvene in about 10 minutes.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the regular city council meeting of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this regular city council meeting to order on February 18, 2020, at 6:05 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by, we have Rafael Brugeras, and then please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Bobby Vargas from Flame Chapel Church.
Would everybody please stand, put their hands over their heart, and repeat, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all."
Good evening, everybody. How many of you, by a show of hands tonight, believe that you are in some form of leadership? Anyone believe that you're in some form of leadership tonight? Yeah, you guys do? I just want to say, as a way of introduction, that the decisions that you make and the way that you lead matters. And everybody in here, I just want to point out that you guys are important and that the duties that you serve here in this community is appreciated, and, and I just want to give you honor for that tonight. One of my favorite basketball coaches of all time is Phil Jackson. And, and I just want to share a quote, and then I'm going to pray. The quote that he said was, I think, most important, the most important thing about coaching is that you have to have a sense of confidence about what you're doing. And, and he talks about the importance of selling that vision. In Proverbs, it says, "In the multitude of counselors there is safety." And so, you guys are all together tonight, and this is a safe place to bring about counsel. So, let's pray, okay? Father, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Thank you that we could honor you with this time. Thank you for these people here, every single person, every single leader. I pray for wisdom, I pray that you would guide every decision that's made, and ask these things in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton?
Present.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Mayor Protembaka?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Cabrera is absent.
Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Rene Bryant, Management Assistant.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Artan Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Mike Lee, interim City Manager.
Alan Brog, Assistant City Manager.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Patty Nevens, Acting Community Development Director.
Captain John Salisbury, Chief of Police.
Abdul Alonit, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
All right, thank you to the staff. We will go ahead and hear public comments on non-agenda items, but prior to that, I do want to mention that if you do need the services for Spanish translation services, we do have that in the back. So, please feel free to use those services. Also, I just want to keep in mind that I embrace the First Amendment, but I know that we can accomplish more if we're respectful towards each other. So, if you could please be respectful when you're at the podium, that would be great. And then comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker, depending on how many speakers we have tonight. And public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff, and again, there's a three-minute time limit. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. Okay, Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have three. Carrie Thinn, Robert Thinn, and Carolyn Brodeur.
All right, go ahead and...
Hello, my name is Carrie Thinn, and I'm here to speak on several items. The first is the US Census and how critical it is that residents of the City of Moreno Valley do complete the census. It's so important because of the fact we have many hard-to-count areas in the City of Moreno Valley, and those areas particularly hard-to-count areas are in District 1 and District 4. And while this map may be quite small to see, it, the darker the blue, the more propensity it is that residents are not counted. We have areas in the City of Moreno Valley that are 39% uncounted. What does that mean? That means that at least 1 in 3 to 1 in 4 residents are not counted in the US Census, which means that the city receives far less funding for services. Our congressional seats are misaligned because we don't count every person in our city, as well as the fact that during redistricting, which will occur in 2021, it will disproportionately realign our districts and not count every person. So, it's very important that we consider that, I hope, US council people, I know you've hosted a US Census briefing here in the city, but I do believe it's very important for the representatives, particularly in District 4 and District 1, get out there, convince people to be counted. This is aggregated data, it's not, it's not released individually for 72 years. So, in my case, I don't think I'm going to be around in 72 years, so I'm not too concerned about where I live or how many people are in my household, but for those that might be, consider that the US Census protects your data for 72 years. The second thing I'd like to talk about is Prop 13, and why I support Proposition 13. This is a $15 billion general obligation bond that's going to be on every person's ballot during Super Tuesday for our primary. This general obligation ballot is something that doesn't just affect residents outside of our Unified School Districts in Valverde and Moreno Valley. This directly impacts all of our children here in the City of Moreno Valley because those general obligation bonds help fund our construction projects, our upgrades to facilities. And the research that I have personally done in why facility, the maintenance of facilities or new construction's important is because when children go to school, they want to know that when it's hot, their classroom's going to be cool. When it's cold, their classroom's going to be warm. And that when they drink from a water fountain, the water coming out of that water fountain is clear and cool. And so, please, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please?
Good evening. Robert Thinn, resident. The front page of the 11th January 2020 Press Enterprise had a headline article titled "AG Challenges Warehouse Deal." Reading from the article, "California Attorney General Brugara Says That Moreno Valley City Council Illegally Disregarded California Environmental Law in 2015 When It Approved a Massive Complex Warehouse Complex That Could Ultimately Cover a Tenth of the City." Most of the rest of the report goes on to identify the environmental impact of the project and why the Attorney General took such unusual and rather dramatic action. The article goes on to include a response from, as it says in the article, "Councilwoman Victoria Baca," in which he states, "I disagree with the Attorney General and hope that the courts will rule in a favor so that we can get this project on the road." "Project on the road," her words. "I do not know if the Mayor Protem used this phrase intentionally, or if it was just off the cuff unintentionally. However, 'get this project on the road' goes directly to an issue plaguing this project, and that is what this project actually gets on the road." "In 2015, when, when it was voted on, the project, a traffic study indicated that the project would generate 68,721 vehicle trips a day, of which 14,006 would be trucks. 14,006 trucks a day may be difficult to imagine. If lined up, they would be equivalent to a line of trucks 129 miles long every day. In a 30-day month, that equates to 420,180 trucks that if lined up would stretch 5,968 miles. Or if you can imagine, this is a line of trucks stretching from Los Angeles all the way to New York and all the way back. That's quite a line of trucks, every month, nearly 6,000, a 6,000-mile line of trucks, 420,000 of them, being concentrated into an environment in our city that already has..." that already has an unhealthy air quality. I believe it is environmentally and morally irresponsible and indefensible for this City Council and this city to continue to support that two thousand and fifteen City Council vote that approved this environmentally disastrous project that will result in increase of greenhouse gas emissions and cancer-causing airborne toxins into our already damaged environment. Sorry. Hand doesn't work so well. We are in the midst of a global climate crisis. Vehicle exhaust is the largest...
Thank you, Mr. Thinn, thank you. Okay, next speaker. We have Carolyn.
I'm sorry, would it be possible if I be accommodated with maybe a table or something I could sit at next time so I can move the papers around a little bit easier? Thank you.
Sure, yeah, definitely, yeah. If you want, just at the next meeting or if I see you, but if you could just let our city clerk know and then we'll have a table there, for sure.
We'll move it right over. Yeah, no problem.
Good evening. I want to talk about a way that we can help support our law enforcement. Right now, there seems to be a high demand for people to join law enforcement and that kind of should tell us that there's a shortage and that we need to make people want to be cops because if we don't do our part as citizens to encourage and support police officers, then we're gonna be faced with a crisis of not having enough people to show up when we call the police department if there's been a crime committed. So, there's something we can all do to help increase the morale of police officers and to help get more people to want to be police officers and to stay in law enforcement. And that is, when we know that somebody has been injured as a police officer, no matter what agency it is, in fact, we can get our pen and paper and make a get well card. That doesn't take much, but let me tell you, it makes a huge difference. You have no idea. It is rarely done. I've had my students make cards for cops that have been injured for years. And today, I got an email from Officer Robert Paul. You might not know his name, but he was critically wounded in the shootout with Officer Andrew Moy, who was killed, right? Well, I knew that Officer Paul needed some support too. And so I had my class make a card for him in the fall of this year and they got their little, the parent helper helped them make little fingerprints, hearts on their cards. And it was, the card, it was really cute. And I didn't know what happened with the card, and so I got this email today. And he says, "I found your email through a school website after I found your name through my elementary school teacher friends. I hope I have the right kindergarten teacher, et cetera. Did your class make a get well card last fall?" Well, I don't put my name on the card, I just put my school room number and my school. And for him to go to such lengths to try to find out who I was, doesn't that tell us a couple of things? It tells us that it made a difference for him, that he got this card, and it tells us that it doesn't happen very often, doesn't it? I could tell you of other times my class has written to injured cops and they were flabbergasted that anyone even cared. So you know what? We can all write to injured cops. I don't care if you've had bad experiences with cops. To say that all cops are bad is like saying all dentists are bad or all whatever. You know, we haven't even met all cops, none of us. So if we want people to stay in law enforcement, we need to appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn, and thank you for coming and sharing that great suggestion. Thank you. At this time, seeing there's no more public speakers, we'll close that public comments and we'll move to our consent calendar. Sections A through E on the agenda, which are considered to be routine and uncontroversial and can be enacted by one motion. And so, the motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be recorded so by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for reporter discussion will be heard after public hearing items. At this time, is there any requests from council for discussion on these? If there isn't, Madam Clerk, any public comments?
None.
Okay, I'll close that. A, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dr. Thornton and the second by Councilmember Marquez. Please vote. And the motion carries one absent. Okay, that leads us straight to reports. We have two reports by Mayor Pro Tembaca, one from the March Dream Powers Commission and the other one from the School District Joint Task Force, and I'll let her give those brief reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with the March Dream Powers Authority. I'm providing the update for the commission meeting that was held on February the twelfth, in which the commission approved the JPA's twenty twenty legislative agenda. We also authorized the JPA commission members to travel to Washington, D.C. with the intent of seeking funding commitments on JPA projects, and I will be attending that trip. Today, we had the Joint Task Force meeting. The joint task included city representatives, representatives from the Marina Valley College, Marina Valley Unified School District, and the State of California Lake Paris. Highlights include the following. The Marina Valley Unified School District will be hosting the Eighth Annual Reading Festival on February twenty-ninth from nine fifteen to three ten P.M. at the Marina Valley Mall. All third-grade students in attendance will receive a book and certificate and enjoy activity booth, entertainment, and raffles throughout the event. I know that our mayor usually is there, I don't think you've ever missed one of those events. So we hope to see you there. In an effort to enhance the city's hike to the top program and expose local hikers to other areas, trail systems, park, and community services will be implementing multi-agency joint trail events. The goal is to provide a different hiking experience and attract more hikers to each agency's hiking events. This partnership will include surrounding cities such as Paris, Redlands, Menifee, Riverside County Regional Park, and Open Space District, and California State Lake Paris. These agencies have been invited to attend the city's hike to the top to Lake Paris on February the twenty-ninth. The city will host the USA Track and Field Sanction Race across the base, five K at March Field Park on March seventh from eight A.M. to eleven A.M. Participants of all ages are welcome to participate. The event will feature a five K run and a one K fun run, fitness and resource fair, medals, t-shirts, food vendors, and prizes. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. We will have a city manager's report, if there's one?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate the mayor, the city council, and then City of Marina Valley again. City of Marina Valley, we win another award. This time, it is from the California Municipal Finance Officers Organization. This is the premier statewide association for public finance professionals. And we received the Award of Excellence for both the city's operating budget and also the capital improvement budget. That concludes the city manager's report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have I three, which is city attorney's report.
Thank you, honorable mayor, Mayor Pro Tembaca, councilmembers. Very briefly, I just wanted to address some of the inaccuracies that were expressed during the public comment period. First of all, the A.G. issued an opinion, it wasn't a report, it's just an opinion from his office, which basically mirrored the allegations that the petitioners already filed with the court. And the city and Highland Fair already responded to that. Secondly, with regard to the impacts, in these projects, the most severe case scenario is always evaluated. In other words, you draw the worst possible picture in order to be able to mitigate against it. I'll give you an example, Skechers Project. The impacts that were evaluated are several times worse than the actual impacts that are on the ground right now, the projects existing and running. And the traffic from the trucks is nowhere near what the numbers were in the I R. So yes, we are looking forward to getting this project on the road. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. So we will go ahead and start with Councilmember Dr. Thornton, followed by Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say a big congratulations to Golden Corral. They had their official opening last Monday. I'm hearing that it's still very crowded with the long lines. I think Councilmember Marquez went for lunch today. If you have not stopped by Golden Corral, this is a welcomed addition to the community and please stop by and continue to frequent this business. In addition to that, Cupcake and Espresso opened in Lakeshore Village, that's the shopping center in Sunny Mead Ranch. I've stopped by numerous times. Please support that business also. We're really fortunate that they've continued to open up chains in our community and so we want to make sure that we're frequenting them and they have amazing cupcakes and lattes. Lastly, the general plan. So we're in the midst of the general plan, which we'll be talking about and doing for the next year. So please, we are really asking for full participation from our residents on this. This is an opportunity for you to speak into the twenty forty plan. Think of it as the roadmap or the vision for the city. So for all of you who have opinions of where you think Marina Valley needs to be going and want to be able to contribute to the conversation, please go to www.movile.org/2040. Additionally, I will be having a meeting in District Two at Canyon Springs High School on March eighteenth from six to eight P.M. And the consultant will be there. In addition, there will be some other dates coming out, announcing some other opportunities for you to speak to me directly about your vision for the city and some things you would like to have included in the general plan. If you're not able to come in person, like I said, please go to the website where you'll be able to participate in the online survey that's available in both English and Spanish at www.movile.org/2040. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to touch real quick on that Golden Corral. It's, you can't say much. The food's good and I'm going back. I'm definitely going back. It was good. Secondly, I just want to shout out to staff. You guys are doing a fantastic job, all of you guys are, and your employees also. A lot of good comments by the residents out there and, well, of course, you always have the bad, but the good is always good to hear. But I just want to say thank you to staff and continue the good work. Next is the new businesses, and again, Golden Corral. Today, we had a ribbon cutting for a new burger restaurant. Burger, it's called Burger M., not Burger Am., but it's Burger M. We had a ribbon cutting, it's located in Stone Ridge Center off of Euclid, Tis and Fur. It's a great, great restaurant. It's got some outdoor seating out there, so, you know, people in District Three, they want to go out and sit outside and eat, that's a fantastic place to go. Several weeks ago, we had another opening directly across the lot and it's UPS Store. And that's also privately owned by, it's a franchise, but... So if you need to send packages out, you don't have to go all the way to District on that side of the town, where you can do it in District Three now. I attended the U.S. Vet groundbreaking ceremony last week. They're gonna break ground for additional apartments for the homeless vets and hopefully, by the end of the year, it'll be up and running. So that's a nice thing to do also. Last but not least, on the general plan, I had been out there telling people about our general plan, March eleventh, and it indicated it was at Valley View High School. Well, it's been changed now, so it's still on the eleventh of March, six to eight, but the new location will be the Marina Valley Senior Citizen Ballroom. So don't go over to Valley View and we'll be issuing or passing out some flyers with more information on that. So anybody in District Three that wants one, give me a call, I'll drop it off to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We also have comments from Mayor Pro Tembaca.
Thank you, Mayor Gutierrez. I just want to say thank you to our staff for keeping us abreast of what's going on and to our police department for helping us with patrolling our streets and responding quickly and responsibly to our community. But on the agenda, and a lot of people are very interested in the general plan update. So for District One, which encompasses Edmond, Town Gate, and Old Sunny Mead, our meeting will be on March the ninth from six to ten P.M., six to eight P.M. at the Town Gate Park Community Center. And I encourage everyone to please come out and make your concerns or suggestions known because that's the opportunity that you'll have. There'll be more meetings, but for District One, please come out and I'll be posting that on my Facebook page so that people can see it. And I hope that we have a lot of people come out and start coming out to the council meetings and find out what's going on. Thank you and good night.
Thank you to the residents of Marina Valley. So as mayor, I do want to welcome Golden Corral. I was able to be there at their opening day and it was really, really amazing. A lot of great people that were there, great, great food. And, you know, my hope is that it continues that way. And the Cupcake Espresso, I also want to congratulate them as well and welcome them for their third opening of their business, and then also Burger M. as well. I thought it was Burger I.M., but it's not, huh? It's Burger M., okay. Okay, wow. So there was eleven hundred people? Wow, so there was eleven hundred people on that day for the opening day for Golden Corral. So I also want to encourage everyone, especially anyone that you know in your house, friends, family, it's so important to take the census, the Census twenty twenty. It's really, really important, especially with our CDBG dollars. Those are our federal funds that we actually get allocated as a city for public use and benefit, you know, for nonprofits. And all of that really depends on, you know, how many residents we have counted. You know, any resident, you know, regardless of immigration or anything, gets counted. So it's important, kids as well are supposed to get counted as well. So that's really important. And so we'll be having more census events, you'll be seeing more public service announcements and those kinds of things because it really, really is important. And I don't know if you've seen already, but we have a marquee as well off the sixty freeway as well, just to let residents know. But we need your help in the community, so please let other people know about the Census twenty twenty. It's really, really important. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting tonight at six thirty-two P.M.